Well, we'll see.
Maybe some longer topics.
Potentially revolve those topics up here.
Yeah.
Sure. I agree with you, Wardage, number three. See? What for say would you be willing to pay?
Morning.
Morning, Tom.
As promised, this is Caitlin Thomas.
Morning, Caitlin.
Tyler Volker, Deputy County Attorney, Jerry Woodruff. Chris Brown, Joe Hugley in the back with Tim White, the Board Assistant, Kayla Wuller, Kent Williams, Becky is not here.
Nicole Fisher.
Nicole and Tara.
And I'm backup.
I heard that. And this is Jason Schultz, the Highway Superintendent, and Brian Voss.
Gloss.
I remember it right. All right. Good, so. She's going to start gradually learning.
She remembers all of her.
Do this beat like I did so long ago, at the same age in the same room.
Well, welcome.
It's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 is Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Both meetings will follow the Open Meetings Act as amended, copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to open. Miss Woodruff, will you do the honors, please?
Yes. Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves, such that they may seek guidance from you. Look after this group as we meet today. Shed a bit of your wisdom and enlightenment on our discussions today as we take care of the business of Lincoln County and its wonderful residents. Look after the many men and women, not only locally but around the globe, that protect our many freedoms that we enjoy. Look after and provide a shield of armor to the first responders, the people in uniform that work in the sheriff's office, the police departments, such that they may be safe in their duties. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Kevin. First order of business to approve the minutes of the Commissioners Meeting held April 29, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners Meeting held April 29, 2024.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Kevin.
Burns.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Special designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, I messed up. Okay, consider it a call. Claims and treasures receipts. Have we done this one before? Claims and treasures receipts? Or is that a?
Couple times.
More money? That'd be a good campaign. Oh, yeah, I can't see it. Claims and treasures receipts. I think we had those in our packets. I'd entertain a motion.
Chairman.
We're not approving, I guess.
No, I think we should. My motion would be to approve the claims and treasures receipts I've presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Now, let's not skip around anymore. Now we have a special designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor for an event to be held at Harbor Lights on June 8, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor for an event to be held at Harbor Lights on June 15, 2024. I think we have several of these, if I'm not mistaken.
I do not see a representative from Big Red Liquor in the audience. Let's see.
We have one. We'll check and tack to our.
I think most of us are familiar with the establishment and proprietor of the business, having done many of these in the past. It'd be up to your consideration how you want to tack on the very first one.
Mr. Chairman, in view of the statements that you have made and the past performance of Big Red Liquor and their congenial relationship with the Sheriff's Department, I motion to approve the special designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor for an event to be held at Harbor Lights on June 8, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is a special designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor for an event to be held at Harbor Lights on June 15, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor for an event to be held at Harbor Lights on June 15, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Burns.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
And the next item is a special designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor for an event to be held at Harbor Lights on June 29, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the designated liquor permit submitted by Big Red Liquor for an event to be held at Harbor Lights on June 29, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Wuller.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
This is the sixth. Sixth. Morning, Tom.
Morning, everybody.
Morning, Tom.
Next item, authorize the chairman to sign the 2024 election polling site rental agreements with Holiday Inn Express, First United Methodist Church, Brayan Church of North Platte, and the Sutherland United Methodist Church. Anybody in here knows anything about polling on polling places? I believe we've done this in the past, so I believe we want to have an election, and so I would certainly entertain a motion if.
Mr. Chairman, I would go ahead and move that we authorize you to sign the 2024 election polling site rental agreements with the Holiday Inn Express, First United Methodist Church, Brayan Church of North Platte, and Sutherland United Methodist Church.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Kevin.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Here are your signatures.
Thank you.
Glad those locations are amicable to continue partnership with.
Yes. Yeah, I believe that's probably pretty.
Are they all four? That would send. Must be. Yeah. How's that for being generous? Hundred bucks. Hundred bucks to rent the Holiday Inn. That's nice.
Next item is to authorizing the chairman to sign the adjusted urban area boundary changes review form in Nebraska Department of Transportation.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda. We received from the Nebraska Department of Transportation this adjusted urban area boundaries and national function classification form. They do it after the census every 10 years, and basically what it does is it adjusts the existing urban boundary to the new adjusted boundary based on expected growth of our urban area. So as you can see here, the red line is the old urban boundary area, and the crosshatched line is, Tammy has it up on the big screen there, is the new adjusted.
And DOT is the one formulating this boundary based off census data?
Yep. The Nebraska Department of Transportation is in the process of reviewing the adjusted urban area boundaries and national function classification system following the release of the 2020 United States Census information. After the release of the decennial census, the United States Census Bureau has updated existing census data as it relates to the federal aid urban area boundaries. This means existing urban area boundaries must be adjusted accordingly. The city has reviewed it and signed off on it. It has been reviewed by our planning administrator, Julie Clark, Judy Clark, I can't talk today, and she recommends it for approval.
It's considered.
It's basically a housekeeping item.
Where is Huggles?
It's only done in communities with populations over 5,000, so none of the county villages needed their adjustments made.
So what's the impact to the county?
We just have to approve what they, what they, I mean, the people that live in the urban areas are also county residents, and so it just expands the urban boundaries of North Platte a small amount for anticipated growth. I can show you where it needs signed if we agree with Judy's and the city council's and the mayor's recommendation to approve it.
Tyler, have you seen that at all?
No.
Is there anything that we want Tyler to look over? The letter is, if there is, it would be in the form of a letter. I might glance at that and peruse that if you have.
And here's Judy Clark's recommendation. It happens once every 10 years.
Becky got this letter?
Yes.
Why didn't she just give it to Tyler to start with? Then we'd know.
I believe it went to Jason first, and then to Judy, and then to me.
Ah.
They court a law in here, but there's very little legal about this.
Yeah.
You don't really have a choice either, so.
And it's due back to the Department of Transportation by the 19th. They included a self-addressed stamped envelope.
So it looks like this expands the area where federal aid for urban areas can be received.
Yes. From here.
Specific.
And you can see it pushes the boundary out just a little bit from what it has been the last 10 years. It was adjusted 10 years ago.
I mean, the boundaries look appropriate for where future growth is going to be.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize you to sign the adjusted urban area boundary changes review form for NDOT, Nebraska Department of Transportation.
Second.
Discussion.
Just that I wish we would have had a little bit more time to review from.
I agree.
The state.
Yes, we're doing.
Census was in '20, and now it's '24. They had time.
Any discussion? Any other questions? Discussion.
No, I would just like to restate that it has been reviewed by the city council, signed off by the mayor, and reviewed by Judy Clark, and recommended that we also approve and sign off on it.
Roll call vote, please, Kevin.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
I know. It's tiny.
Senator.
Morning.
Thank you.
Next item is received an order filed to feed and fork for the register of deeds.
Chairman, I would move to accept the in order filed to register deeds in court collecting the amount $22,402.88.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, authorizing the chairman to sign the pay application number eight for the Sutherland North Bridge Project.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize you to sign the pay application, number eight, that was tabled last week for the Sutherland North River Bridge Project.
Second. Mr. Chairman, second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Easy enough.
Yeah.
Took care of that well, sir.
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to let you guys sign it. Okay. Thank you.
We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:19. I do want to restate that we do follow the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. First order of business, approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held April 29, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on April 29, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please, Kevin.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Certificates of fresh and refunds submitted by the county assessor. Looks like we do have one.
Yep. Good morning. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Julie. Good morning. What you have is a personal property acceleration of the 2024 taxes. These individuals moved to Oklahoma, sold their equipment in February or March, so we are accelerating the personal property taxes on this application or return, I'm sorry.
Pretty routine. We have accelerated tax on personal property for $122.61. I would entertain a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the same.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize your signature on the correction and refund certificate submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Kevin.
Burns.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. All right. Next item is motor vehicle tax exemption application is submitted by the county treasurer. We had those in our packets for the weekend.
Chairman, I believe we only have one. Form 457 this morning, an application for exemption, American National Red Cross, for one Honda, 2024 model year CRV vehicle. States its vehicle's used for transport, collect blood, and blood products. Been reviewed and approved by County Treasurer Alex Ruchulo. Therefore, my motion would be to approve as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a strong second.
A double second.
Any questions or discussions? Roll call vote, please, Kevin.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Okay, we'll come back in. So we will adjourn unless there's any other business to come before the Board of Equalization. We'll adjourn at 9:22. We convene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. We sign a couple of claims here for our 9:30 item.
Thank you, ladies. Item number three, staff.
it. So let's see. Next day.
with NACO and with John Cannon, but I also recognize that Lincoln County is a little unique, and so I'm very interested in knowing your perspective, and to the extent that it may differ from NACO, I represent this district, not the entire organization. Some bills of interest that I thought I'd just maybe address. The first one I want to talk a little bit about was LB 1363, which this is a bill that was brought by Senator McDonnell. It had amended into it the bill that Senator Clements had brought, which was the home, or the ability to eliminate the inheritance taxes. When I talk about elimination of inheritance taxes, I tend to get the attention of NACO and county commissioners because obviously that's a significant part of revenue, that it's not an even flow of revenue, which is hard for some of the senators to understand, that when those dollars flow into the county, you're using that in some extent for a reserve, which is prudent in my mind to do so. It's also higher able to handle some of the capital expenditures without passing that on to taxpayers. My push on the floor when the bill was first introduced was Senator Clements had brought two pieces to his original inheritance tax bill. One was he wanted to completely phase it out over five years, and he wanted to basically make some changes with the local tourism boards, and he really didn't have really a pay for when it came for how you're gonna, if you remove the revenue, where's the pay for? So I was very clear that as much as I hate inheritance taxes, I hate property taxes more, and I know as I went around the district, there was one thing that was very loud and clear, is people do not want property taxes, and so if we take away a revenue source from the county and don't replace it, we put you in a very, very difficult spot. Lincoln County, as I've watched over the years, this board has been very prudent with the dollars, with the taxpayer dollars that you've had. We don't see the extravagant things that are occurring. You're doing what we need to do to take care of roads and to manage what happens in the county, but you've done it very prudently, and we've not seen big property tax increases as a result of that. In fact, you've been able to control property taxes, and in part, as you do have that revenue source with inheritance taxes that provide you some reserve. Obviously, you look at situations that occur. You get a year where you've got bad snow. You look at a year where you've got a bridge that's a problem. They're expensive to replace, and without those reserves, you have no option but to really try to go to the taxpayers. So when this bill ultimately, Senator Clements worked with Senator McDonnell and moved it into his bill, and so what he was trying to do was water down the inheritance tax savings. And as you probably well know, the state inheritance tax, for those that are related, in other words, sons, daughters, the inheritance tax is 1% of the estate. When you're a cousin, that amount is 11%, and when you're unrelated, it's 15%. Now, unlike many, I'm more concerned about that direct descendant because that's where you pass through businesses and farms and so on, and although we're not eliminating the federal tax, if we can eliminate the state tax, that would be great to see. The problem with the compromise bill that came in 1363 was they were moving the 15% on the unrelated down to 8%, moving the cousins down from 11 to 8, and leaving the 1% in place. Well, you accomplished the opposite of what I was looking for. So I became very opposed to the bill. The other thing was the pay for. They heated my message on the pay for from the standpoint, if we were going to reduce inheritance taxes altogether, we could probably take some of the doc stamp fees, increase the doc stamp fee, and give all those additional revenues to the counties to offset inheritance taxes. This bill came back and basically Senator McDonnell was wanting to take and move the doc stamp fees up by a dollar, so it'd go from 225 to 325, and then $500,000 a year initially would be going to the Charles Drew Home in Omaha. Okay, now, it didn't say Charles Drew. It said, it described what it was, but there's only one facility in the state that would qualify as Charles Drew. So I felt that people in Lincoln County would have a little bit of pushback on giving a half million dollars a year to Charles Drew. Not that it's a bad program, but I'm not sure we want to be sending the dollars to Omaha. So I came out adamantly opposed to the bill. NACO had reached a compromise because it did solve what NACO needed, but my concern was if we're gonna raise the doc stamps at all, and in my mind, the dollars, the maximum that you'd be able to raise doc stamp fees, we need to bring all those dollars back to the county. This was only gonna raise it up. We were gonna go from 50 cents that you get today to $1.15, and the rest of it was gonna be going to these other uses. So that bill on final reading did get stopped. We passed over the bill, so we'll be able to come back next year with something a little more, that makes a little more sense. And so I'm gonna want to work with all of you, and one of the questions I would ask for you to research is, is how many dollars are we talking about that Lincoln County is generating? And I'd like to get it from this group as opposed to someone else on what do you need annually ongoing?
I have it ready for you, Senator.
Perfect, because that's the number I want to be working on, and how do we make sure that we've got the right offset? There will be a push for bringing back inheritance tax cuts, but I'm not gonna support a bill that isn't gonna provide the appropriate offsets because, again, I hate property taxes. I know all of you do, and I don't want to put you in a position where you have no choice. So that's 1363. I want to also talk a little bit about LB 1300, which I know Commissioner Woller had an interest in this one. We got there a long way. She reached out to me early on, and along with VSO officer again, and we wanted to make the changes that needed to occur for the VSO to be able to allow you to help those who are not involved in an active conflict overseas and for retired National Guard. And so I was prepared to bring a bill. We got with bill drafters, and Senator Boestar had already had a bill drafted. It was exactly the same thing. Lancaster County was working with him on that. So I met with Senator Boestar and said, "Look, I don't have nearly the bills coming that you do." Senator Boestar, for what it's worth, actually had drafted 70 bills, and I think introduced about 40. So I'm just telling you that I don't care how good you are, you can't keep track of 40 bills, okay? It's awfully hard to do. And so that was my concern, and Commissioner Woller and I discussed that early on, but I committed that I would keep an eye on it. And so as we were getting into the closing days of the session, I know Commissioner Woller was very concerned about, are we gonna get across the finish line and things? And trust me, we know where it's at. We're gonna get there. Originally, I would have worked through, worked with Senator Brewer and could have got it tucked into one of his bills, preferably the committee priority bill, and just got it done. But there's, Senator Boestar and I are different political parties, as I'm on the same party as Brewer, and so we would have probably had a little better chance of getting it done on the standalone, but we were able to get it tucked into LB 1300, did get it passed. We did it the hard way, but I did learn one lesson, is that in the future, when I come into this, I'm gonna bring my own bill so I can control it from the beginning. So we did get that passed, and I think that's significant for the county. Also, I want to talk a little bit about LB 644. LB 644 last year was my personal priority bill, and people were wondering why would I bring a personal priority bill that largely was going to impact Lincoln and Omaha? And the answer to that was real simple, because I made sure that there was an amendment that would carve out some of the dollars to come west of the 100th Meridian. So LB 644 is the mega site bill, and this is to be able to create up to 1,300 acres that would be available for a large manufacturer to come into the state, Toyota, Tesla, take any of these large manufacturers, and basically get those sites prepped. So it was Senator McDonnell's bill last year. I agreed to prioritize it as long as they agreed to add an amendment to the bill that 15% of any funding that would go to the mega sites would have to be invested in a site west of the 100th Meridian. Now, I was gonna put in also that had an inland port authority, but I couldn't get quite that part done, but they knew what I was talking about. So that bill did pass this year without any funding, but we did get the program set up, and we did fund $500,000 to be used for site development or site location searches. So I do want to stay connected on this, and I think it's particularly important as it relates to the inland port. In my mind, we've got not only the inland port here, but we also have the ground, incorp land, which would be a huge base, not far, you know, near the interstate, nearly inland port. So I think that would be a big part of where we might be able to look at a mega site. But particularly, first and foremost, I was looking at, it would be the smallest of the mega sites, but would be set up for a large manufacturer to be able to come in and tuck in next to the inland port. So that is, the bill has gotten passed. What we're gonna want to watch now as we move through this next year is as they start looking at siting, we want to be talking to them about siting it here as far as the one that's gonna go west of the 100th Meridian. LB 126, homestead exemption. I was able to work with Julie Stinger on this. We had a number of phone calls on this. I submitted a homestead exemption bill. There were four different bills that were introduced before the Revenue Committee. We ended up with kind of a Frankenstein bill that didn't look like any of the bills that got submitted. That's a problem in itself. So I went from promoting my bill, which would allow for homestead exemptions to be for veterans, so that if you're a disabled veteran today, to qualify as a disabled veteran, you must be 100% disabled. I wanted to be able to allow that to be a homestead exemption based upon the percentage of disability, which would qualify a number of additional veterans for that. It's hard to get 100% disability. And so Senator Day's bill, LB 126, would allow up to, down to a 50% disability to get a 50% homestead exemption. The problem with the final bill is it didn't include anything for veterans, and all it did, and I had raised after conversations with Julie Stinger, the situation we're having out at the lake, where we've got land that has increased in value geometrically just simply because supply and demand. So we've got an individual out there that lives in a home that was a tax assessed, the home itself, the residence, about $82,000, and the land underneath it $340,000, which kicked her out of her homestead exemption. She's widowed, single income, and lost her homestead exemption. So I made that case. They did include that caveat in the final bill, but they're only allowing to go back one year. We need to go back more than one year to be able to get that one in. The problem was, these changes were being made on final reading. The speaker was pleading with me not to amend it because he wanted to get to the finish line. I said, "That's fine. There are so many problems with the homestead exemption bill that I want to come back with a whole new bill next year and get something done." Now, you're saying next year. Why is next year so important? Well, there'll be a new chair of the Revenue Committee, and I plan to go on the Revenue Committee next year as well. So once you're on the Revenue Committee, you can control these revenue bills a lot easier than you can if you're on other committees. And so that's another thing that I plan to bring back next year. I would be, continue to look for input. I would tell you, Julie Stinger's been very, very valuable in providing me input. I think there was, at one point in time, there was an iteration of the bill that would have had two tracks on how you're gonna do it. I think you probably would have had to hire another person in the office, the assessor's office, just to track what that bill was gonna do. So I've often wondered, when some of these conversations go on and how we're gonna. So we did get that passed, and I think that's significant for the county. Also, I wanna talk a little bit about LB 644. LB 644 last year was my, my personal priority bill, and people were wondering, why would I bring a personal priority bill that largely was going to impact Lincoln and Omaha? And the answer to that was real simple, because I made sure that there was an amendment that would carve out some of the dollars to come west of the 100th Meridian. So LB 644 is the mega site bill, and this is to be able to create up to 1,300 acres that would be available for a large manufacturer to come into the state, a Toyota, Tesla, take any of these large manufacturers, and, and basically get those sites prepped. So it was Senator McDonald's bill last year, I agreed to prioritize it, as long as they agreed to add an amendment to the bill, that 15% of any funding that would go to the mega sites would have to be invested in a site west of the 100th Meridian. Now, I was gonna put in also that had an inland port authority, but I couldn't get quite that part done, but, but they knew what I was talking about. So that bill did pass this year without any funding, but we did get the program set up, and we did fund $500,000 to be used for site development or site location searches. So I do wanna stay connected on this, and I think it's particularly important as it relates to the inland port. In my mind, we've got not only the inland port here, but we also have the ground, Incorp land, which is, which would be a huge base, not far, you know, near the interstate, nearly inland port. So I think that would be a big part of where we might be able to look at a mega site. But particularly, first and foremost, I was looking at, it would be the smallest of the mega sites, but would be set up for a large manufacturer to be able to come in and tuck in next to the inland port. So, so that is, the bill has gotten passed, what we're gonna wanna watch now, as we move through this next year, is as they start looking at citing, we wanna be talking to them about citing it here, as far as the one that's gonna go west of the 100th Meridian. LB 126, homestead exemption, I was able to work with Julie Stinger on this, we had a number of phone calls on this. I submitted a homestead exemption bill, there were four different bills that were introduced before the revenue committee. We ended up with kind of a Frankenstein bill, that didn't look like any of the bills that got submitted. That's a problem in itself, so I went from promoting my bill, which would, which would allow for homestead exemptions to be for veterans, so that if you're a disabled veteran today, to qualify as a disabled veteran, you must be 100% disabled. I wanted to be able to allow that to be a homestead exemption based upon the percentage of disability, which would qualify a number of additional veterans for that. It's hard to get 100% disability, and so Senator Day's bill, LB 126, would allow up to, down to a 50% disability, to get a 50% homestead exemption. The problem with the final bill is it didn't include anything for veterans, and all it did, and I had raised after conversations with Julie Stinger, the situation we're having out at the lake, where we've got land that has increased in value geometrically, just simply because supply and demand. So you, we've got an individual out there that, that lives in a home that was a tax assessed, the home itself, the residence, about $82,000, and the land underneath it $340,000, which kicked her out of her homestead exemption. She's widowed, single income, and lost her homestead exemption. So I made that case, they did include that caveat in the final bill, but they're only allowing to go back one year, we need to go back more than one year to be able to get that one in. The problem was, these changes were being made in, on final reading, the Speaker was pleading with me not to amend it, because he wanted to get to the finish line, I said, "That's fine, I'm, there are so many problems with the homestead exemption bill, that I wanna come back with a whole new bill next year and get something done." Now, you're saying next year, why is next year so important? Well, there'll be a new chair of the revenue committee, and I plan to go on the revenue committee next year as well. So once you're on the revenue committee, you can control these revenue bills a lot easier than you can if you're on other committees. And so that's another thing that I plan to bring back next year. I would be, continue to look for input, I would tell you, Julie Stinger's been very, very valuable in providing me input. I think there was, at one point in time, there was an iteration of the bill that would've had two tracks on how you're gonna do it. I think you probably would've had to hire another person in, in the office, the assessor's office, just to track what that bill was gonna do. So I've often wondered, when some of these conversations go on, and how we're gonna modify these bills, if anybody's picking up the phone and talking to the people that are gonna have to take care of it, and have them explain to you whether this makes sense or not. So that's why I try to do those things. I think, other than that, I would just tell you that it's been, it's been an interesting session, part of the job in, in the legislature is try to pass good legislation, another part of it is to try to stop bad legislation. I think I was kind of instrumental in doing a little bit of both this past year. But with that, I might just stop and see if you've got questions for me, and I want you to know that, continue to stay in contact along the way, I'm working on drafting bills for next year, and I know, I'm also gonna work, I believe NACO's asked me to be involved in this inheritance tax task force, and so I'll plan to be a part of that as well, so that we can try to create as little damage as we can as we work through that piece.
Thank you, Senator. Let me, let me talk a little bit about the inheritance tax. Having been on the state NACO board for probably 20 some years, and an officer for a lot of years, obviously, this is not something new, it's come up every year. It's gonna, something's gonna happen, we know that. So I appreciate you, Senator, I appreciate our NACO board and administration in being proactive, in trying to make something workable for counties, because you're absolutely right. The county is the only one that gets those funds. You take them away, they have to come from somewhere. I mean, you're not, it, and we're very, very limited, you know, in property taxes, where it would come from. So rather than hearing people scream loud here and in Lincoln, you would hear them screaming even louder here, and Lincoln can very easily say, "Well, that's a local issue," and it is. So I appreciate you, Senator, on behalf of our district and the county, doing that work. It's, it's, it's a tireless job, I appreciate it, I appreciate the many conversations you have with myself and the people around this table, Julie, I see Tom out there, you know, you just stay focused on what you're doing, and I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Other questions?
Senator, the inheritance thing, having been in that investment business many years ago, it helped with a lot of estate planning. I know the impact of it, and I'm like you, I don't like it, but the proposal was really a windfall for people without real estate, legacy to real estate, that were gonna stay in the farm and ranch business, they were gonna get all the benefit, and the poor guy here just passing on the farm to his son, or aunt or daughter, whatever, they're gonna pay that increased tax value levy forever, forever and ever. And with proper planning, I'll put a plug in for that business, even though I'm not in it anymore, but I just settled a $4 million estate last year, and paid $8,200 in inheritance tax to, to the fund, and what I'm saying is, if you, if you really are paying attention and do the proper tax planning, it's very minimal, it can be very minimal on an operation, on the impact on the estate, it's just a matter, you have to do your due diligence and your homework, and do some planning ahead. So I do appreciate the fact that you weigh that in.
Well, I think part of that, I appreciate that, and, and I would tell you that the other, the other piece of that is, many of these unrelated either don't live in the state today, or aren't gonna stay in the state.
Correct.
So we've even lost those dollars, we've, we've provided savings for non-residents.
Exactly.
I, I, to me, the biggest focus starts with that first line, those people are gonna inherit that business, try to keep that business moving forward, they're gonna have a big enough challenge, paying the federal inheritance tax, let's go and pile on at the state level. So that's where I just didn't see that we were, we were solving the wrong problem with that bill.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Senator, I appreciate it, I do wanna hand this around, that'll give you some information on inheritance tax.
Perfect.
And appreciate you taking the time, we've got another group back here.
I figured you did.
Can I say just one thing, Senator Jacobson, thank you so much. Without your encouragement and support, and all of the information that you shared with VSO, GAN, and myself, it was very comforting, having not just you, but Julie there with you too. She did a great job in keeping me in the loop, and letting me know where we were at, and I will say, I don't think it would've gotten across the finish line without you guys, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I would echo the comments, you're doing a fantastic job. I appreciate the great working relationship, and the timely communication that we've been having, and look forward to it continuing.
Well, the key here is that we have a great county board, we really do. I mean, it's always been good, but you guys are focused, doing the right things, we've never seen growth like we've seen, and we're going to see into the future as we move forward. And that doesn't happen unless we've got a city and a county that are working together, and, and being able to have, give me the information I need to be effective in Lincoln, to be able to make sure that we get the right amount of funding we need here, and that we don't have roadblocks there, so I do appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate you for your work, Senator.
Thank you.
Like you may have testified before I see you signing in.
I am, I just thought I better, it seems like you always gotta leave your name somewhere, thank you.
Senator, on behalf of the governors of Nebraska and this county, I wanna thank you so much for your tireless work in helping the veterans.
Thank you.
I appreciate you very much.
Next item, 940, discussing, consider a request by Debra's Legacy to appeal for a modification to their ARPA grant spending award. Welcome, just please state your name and sign in for the record, please.
I'm Allison Fanning Hibner, co-founder of Debra's Legacy.
Megan Stricker, Director of Residential Services, Debra's Legacy.
Morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I believe we received your request, had that information at least to look at over and digest, please go ahead when you're ready.
We were approached, well, to back up just a little bit, our program has, we opened the doors in 2013, in, in a rental at 721 North Poplar, and through the years, it's just grown and grown, and we spread across the alley, rented this property, we've come to own the home, and then rent, continue to rent the, the property 705 North Poplar, and we continue to grow our residential program, we continue to grow our outreach, and we continue to grow our social enterprise, and we continue to grow out of our space. And so for several years, we had been approaching our landlord about purchasing this building, and were continually denied, and then we began to look other places, and then he called and said, "So, do you wanna buy the building?" After several years, and so, so in that process of looking at other options, we had applied for the ARPA grant to help us with some of our storage needs, that we felt qualified for those monies, as far as supplying a solid food source, and nutritional education for our ladies, as well as cleaning supplies and stuff in the COVID era that our property just did not provide. So then, in acquiring this new building, which our board of directors approved, you have the forms there in front of you, to purchase the rest of the building, that we already rent part of that space in, we felt like, could we use that money where we were going to build a garage for these purposes, that we would then put into this space that we've purchased? We feel like it is an apples-to-apples switch of the funds, we are not, the electrical that we submitted for the garage would be applied to electrical renovation for this new space, and those things have been itemized in the paperwork presented before you. I think that pretty much sums it up. We did, we would, per our insurance, part of the garage was gonna be containing for our lawnmower and landscape maintenance, stuff to that effect, and our insurance company asked us to build a separate structure to house the fuel for that, so we would put up just a small temporary garage in between the house and the building, and for those things, and then transfer everything else in the grant that we applied for over to this new building space.
Thank you, I, I looked at it, I guess I am looking in favor of putting on it, however, I would ask first, before we even have a motion, that if our legal counsel weighed in, if he sees any reason, perhaps we could not meet their request.
Well, I looked into this a little bit, mostly at the federal level, because I don't wanna run sideways with the federal government changing a sub-award grant after the fact. Every indication I found is that we have the ability to do this until the end of December this year, at which point we cannot change them at all. The only thing I would ask is maybe to have the board request that Debra's Legacy file a new application, simply detailing what the, what the money's gonna go toward. That way, West Central has one of those on file, so when, when they get audited, or when we get audited on this, there's actually a paper trail for the change in the grant request. It sounds like the board's leaning toward it, that's fine, I just think that you can send them home, confident in knowledge that if they submit a application to amend that grant, it'll probably get looked on favorably by this board.
Makes sense.
Makes sense. We in agreement?
I, I've had great conversations with members of your board, and I love what you guys are doing. I did make that recommendation that there'd be good communication with West Central Nebraska Development District, so I figured that was gonna be in line with what legal counsel would recommend.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you would make that application through West Central, Bert?
Yes.
Please do that. Very good, thank you, ladies. Wow, that was easy, huh? Good gap, big gap, big gap. That's the big, big gap, we're gonna, sign slower.
While we're signing claims, Mr. Chairman, did you wanna consider committee reports or anything out of order?
Yes, we probably should have done that, but we have one in front of our thing we can't consider, I'm not so. You know, while we're signing here, and we do have some, some additional time, this might be a good time to have some committee reports now, as we are able to take some of these items out of order, including that. So as we sign, if there's somebody that would like to give a committee report, I would certainly entertain it at this time. I think Kent and Jerry, how are we coming on our medical?
Our relief program?
Yes.
We are tentatively scheduled for an impromptu at 11:00 AM.
Okay, thank you.
Key player in that, who assists us with that, Tyler is also included.
Appreciate it.
So we're, we're kinda winging that this morning, we don't run real long on the next item, it's time certain.
So you wanna go?
Management's gonna go down any producer here, some different groups.
Yeah, Kevin was CC'd on that, as well as the MRA.
The way I read that, it looks like there's gonna be continued conversation.
I'm shocked that we got something back, so.
Issues that legal counsel, we could still realize there's some pressure.
Uh-oh.
Oh, no.
Look at me, no, no, I, back to brown.
This'll probably pick up some of your time.
He always wants money when he comes in.
I didn't say a word.
He's either looking for donuts, or he wants money, I don't know.
I know where you live, Cube, so.
I'm not gonna tell you where I parked.
I have a trained investigator, I'll bet you. Probably pretty close to my front door, huh?
Pretty close, yeah. I bet you can find it.
It's all over broken taillights. No. It's not.
Perfect. Yeah, you see why, yeah, that's typical, that's pretty.
I've never noticed that before.
Yeah. Yeah. Got to weigh in.
I mean, it makes
Got to weigh in.
I mean, it makes sense on their part.
Yeah. Just the way it is.
Is there another one?
This one's from Oh, these are the suggestion to push a bunch of I realized that I would like consider that you guys talk about that. It wasn't through the time that I worked there too, it's through my that I have had firsthand experience with.
And these were
And I doubt if it's anything that we have in the ISO. Just an FBI.
Oh, there were like two copies of each. Is that what it was? One for them, one for us?
You had two for holiday express for the TV.
Oh, okay. See, I only signed that. Okay, I'm with you. Got you. It's probably Michaela's.
Sure. I'll take the blame. I got broad shoulders.
How did we manage to have the honor of having two TV personalities this morning?
Yeah, they sent us both out.
I can tell the wheels are turning. You have something you'd like to say?
That's very good. That's very good. Obviously, we had a lucky timing here, we're not in the RAC. That's incredibly good.
And we really
Incredibly good.
We didn't really do anything to improve.
I don't know why she called here. Maybe she forgot what the extension she
Oh, it's right in the rules. Takes more fire, huh?
I'll make more fire.
I didn't know that.
I bet she was surprised when you answered.
Based on I was.
I bet she was.
Oh, yeah.
Sense, think about it.
Is Tammy there? Can I speak to Tammy? No. Not right now. I didn't know how to I didn't know. I'm going to answer for her to see.
I did.
Can I have her call you?
Do you want me to send it back? I figured it only needed three.
I'm lucky to know how to answer the phone in this place.
They're not going to sign off on anything.
All the buttons.
I don't know that that's a true statement.
They use the upper oven or? I was just going to say the exact same thing. That's how I want to go. Straight Viking.
Probably just a little bit. We look forward to should be a joint training, but we look forward to training. First responder this year, the government first responder training. Keep on
There's many attorneys who can view that and they can contact.
She lost. Made the wrong turn. Going on the interstate.
She's just a straight shot. Maybe I got off too soon.
Coach your charge. Really?
We get overcharged.
And maybe Todd was going to start the meeting this morning. Set the end of the print?
I have one here that I'm researching something on.
Chris, if you have ample time to a little bit to serve here and other stuff. Uh, he's all right for, you know, all your comments and stuff.
That's it.
You know, it's It's not as an action item, that's a big deal. He looked at the diversity of justice. And it'll light up the way that one question was ordered. And then you say But I didn't say that. Didn't say that. Which is good. Only I feel I wouldn't have answered him that way. I would have answered him beyond this. But, you know, I came in and got it this weekend, but most of them are still out there, so this morning we didn't. Now that the press is back in the room.
Not 10:30 yet.
No, I say now that the press is back in the room and the meeting is still going, I'm going to read something. We had committee reports and I was just made aware that as you know, Commissioner Brunson and I were appointed by Commissioner Woodruff when he was chairman last year to look into the railcar explosion. We gave that report last week. And so I'm pleased to announce that we had a speedy response from Mr. Vina, who is the CEO of Union Pacific Railroad. And it's addressed to the entire board. I'd like to read that. It says, Dear Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, thank you for your letters sharing recommendations following the emergency response to the September 14th, 2023 railcar fire at North Lat's Bailey Yard. You highlighted several workplace development, training, and process improvement opportunities which our team looks forward to discussing with you. Union Pacific and Lincoln County Board are aligned in Union Pacific and Lincoln County Board are aligned in a shared goal of safeguarding our employees and the community members. North Platte's Bailey Yard is one of the largest rail yards in North America and a critical part of the Union Pacific's network and its team of nearly 1,400 employees average 18.7 years of experience and safety handling more than 7,400 railcars daily. The yard is led by 86 operating managers who also average 18 years of experience. We continue successfully recruit operational talent into the North Platte area, hiring nearly 300 employees over the last two years who are proud to live and work in your community. Union Pacific will never compromise safety, and we're committed to ensuring our employees are equipped with the training and tools needed to work safely. In 2023, North Platte averaged 70 hours of training per employee in areas such as train crew safety, engineering track maintenance, and locomotive and car repair. We also remain committed to ensuring our communities are trained to respond, trained to respond, period. While rail remains the safest mode of transportation for hazardous materials, safely arriving at destinations 99.9% of the time, first responders play a critical role in an incident, if an incident occurs. We train more than 6,400 first responders across our network in 2023, and we look forward to training North Platte first responders later this year. Union Pacific values our relationship with the North Platte community. We are committed to ensuring the safety of our employees and your community members. Our team is carefully reviewing the points outlined in your letter, and we look forward to meeting with you soon. It's signed Jim Venna, Chief Executive Officer. There are CCs to FRA Administrator Emmett Bose and Nebraska Public Service Commissioner Kevin Stocker. So I appreciate that's for the Union Pacific Corporation, a really quick turnaround. I'm glad that they took it and delighted that they did, and so I know we look forward to, and I'm sure the first responders look forward to working with them further. So just wanted to give that as a committee report. And there we are, two minutes till our next agenda item.
This is the last claim.
115, 125.
They're all out of order.
Not when I got them.
It's just chaos happening.
It just goes, just goes like herding cats after they leave my hands. I can't have no control.
That is the truest statement I've heard tonight.
It's 10:30. Our next agenda item is Lincoln County Employee Benefits Committee to present recommendations pertaining to the employee benefit package concerning health insurance, cash-in-lieu, and wellness programs. So I would welcome members or representative from the Wellness Committee.
I think Mike is here to say that first.
I think to Mr. Chairman, as the commissioner that sits on the Benefits Committee, we did receive information on the rate increase, and I think it might be appropriate to have members from NACO that helped manage that for us, maybe provided some information on that before we get into what we talked about.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Please just introduce yourself and sign in.
Good morning. I'm Mike Bowden with Nebraska Association of County Officials. I'm the Benefit Services Manager, and I want to introduce also, I've got Greg Mooney here with me. He's a new member for NACO Benefit Services Team, and I'm proud to say he is actually a North Platte resident as well. So we'll be seeing more and more of Greg as we, as he gets, he's learned a lot, but he's still, we're not throwing him to the wolves yet, so. And then Jim Dobbert from First Concord is here as well, and Jim, as you know, has been a longtime partner of NACO and helps out with a lot of different components of your benefit package, so.
Good morning.
Morning, Jim.
Good morning, Jim. Great. Nice to see you again.
So the, I wanted to just start, as Commissioner Brunson said, giving you a high-level view and let you ask some questions about the renewal. This time every year, the NACO benefits pool, health insurance and dental insurance pool, goes through a renewal process, and so this is the 44th year of the NACO pool in being gathered in similar fashion as it is now. But there is one significant change this year for the renewal, and it's really what, why we're making a change this year is just the market forces. There are so many things going on in the health insurance marketplace that are different than what they were, you know, 40 years ago and even five years ago. So they've required us to make some changes, and the change that we've made is, as you may remember from years past, and the health insurance renewal comes out, it's one rate that's applied to everybody. So if there's a 4% increase, everybody in the pool gets that 4% rate increase. There's a few exceptions to that rule, but that's, in general, that's the way that that works. This year, the NACO Benefit Committee and then the NACO Board approved a different methodology for that renewal. In a nutshell, what it says is, in conjunction with Blue Cross and the NACO Actuary, will develop a risk profile for each of the groups, subgroups that are in the NACO pool, and then they'll be placed on kind of a continuum of rate tiers, and there are 5% increments. We've always called everything the standard rate, so, and we're still have what we call a standard rate. If your group produces less claims and if your risk profile is lower, you may move below that standard rate at renewal. If your risk profile is higher and you're producing more claims, you may move higher. There is still safeguards within the NACO pool. There's guardrails in a group, even no matter how bad your experience or how good it is, you're not going to move more than two tiers during any renewal period. So that's been a different philosophy on the renewal, and the main reason we did that is for groups to get quotes from health insurance companies now is easier than it's ever been. It basically just takes a census with all the eligible employees and dependents, date of birth, zip code, and male, female, then you can go out and get a binding quote with that. So what we've seen is several brokers, they go out to a lot of our NACO groups, and, you know, it's a public, public meeting, if they can get on the agenda, they come in and they, you know, they make sometimes wild accusations about how much money they can save. Sometimes they can save that if they find a group where there's, you know, they're really healthy at any given time. They give them a proposal, and it's really difficult from where, you know, from where Commissioner sits, if you're making financial decisions for the county, if you see that there could be a significant savings, it's hard to say no to that. If the brokers come out and they find out that the group's not healthy, they just move on to the next one. So what that's doing to the pool is it pulls out the groups that are healthy at any given time and leaves the ones that are not healthy. So this renewal strategy is a way to recognize that and to make some accommodations that are favorable for the groups that have, you know, they look like they're better risk than maybe a different group in the pool. So, so that's what changed during this renewal period, and that was, you know, it's been 40 some years since that pool's been together. That was really difficult and took a lot of conversation from, from the commissioners that sat on the NACO Board and from the Benefits Committee, so. So that's kind of where the renewals are. Now, how that affects Lincoln County, Lincoln County, and I know from the conversations with the Benefits Committee, you know, hopefully it's no surprise to at least some of the members of the committee that Lincoln County actually fell in the first tier above our standard rates. So what that means is there's an 8.7% increase on the health insurance premiums for Lincoln County regardless of which plans you go into. So what we call that the .105 tier. So it's a, from our standard rate tier, it'd be one step up. We've got, I think, 59 groups in the pool, and we've got 17 that are two tiers up, which is a 13.9%. We had 15 that fall into the same tier as Lincoln County. We had 21 that stayed on the regular tier, and then the rest were something more favorable than below zero renewal. So just to kind of give you a spectrum of how those groups shook out. And again, that, that risk profile is developed through, to begin with anyway, that's a lot of actuarial and underwriting type mathematics that they go through to figure out where a group should fit, and it's based on past claims history, a couple of different snapshots of that, and then it's, some of it's based on the demographics of the group, which would be average age and male, female, and that type of thing. And then there's the underwriters, when they look at that, they have an opportunity to say, you know, maybe there's, we've got one county as an example, they have two gigantic claims in their, in their risk, you know, claims history, those claims are not going to be going forward, so there's an opportunity for them to make some risk adjustments based on that as well. So, so it's, it's mostly objective, or, you know, there's not much subjectivity to the way they come up with these numbers. So just wanted to throw that out there, a review of where we're at with the renewal, and then those, those rates become effective for July 1. So any questions on, on that part? Would you like me to jump into?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Let me start with this, if I may hand out some information. So this first sheet is just a high-level view of the Benefits Committee. We had an opportunity to meet two different times with the Benefits Committee, and went through actually a lot of information. One of the early pieces was a survey of employees, and you might have gotten some feedback on that from employees, and there were some interesting comments, I thought, from the survey, and Tammy, I think that was really worthwhile as an exercise to kind of get a better feel for what's important. But really, I think the number one issue that kind of brought the Benefits Committee together and created the, maybe a little bit of urgency is just the difficulty in recruiting and retaining employees because the, if you have employees that need family coverage or something besides single coverage, it was, and a lot of times, cost prohibitive, and I think there were, maybe there were some examples that were cited from some job offers, maybe that weren't accepted because of the, the way the benefit package was structured. So that was kind of the first step to look at, are there ways we can solve that issue? So that was the first thing that was identified, and so on this, on this sheet, there were, and I'll, I'll put some more numbers on this in a minute, but I just want to kind of level set with what some of the discussions were about. So the health plan, there, you know, there's an option out there. Right now, the county has offered the 1,600 deductible health plan and has for quite a while, and that's worked well, but there, there may be some ways to kind of stretch the budgeted dollar for health benefits that would benefit employees a little more, create some additional options, and then use the resources a little more wisely to make, you know, a benefit package more appealing to some.
When you say the $1,600 benefit deductible plan, maybe we buy it down to five though, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So in essence, it's a five to the employee.
Yep. And Commissioner Hughley, I've got a couple of things that I'll show later that show the impact to the employee. If you did, if you did decide to go to some of these options, how that would affect employees. So one of the things we talked quite a bit about is the next step up in deductible for the pool plans is a $2,600 co-pay plan, and that, that works very, so that buydown could still be in place, and from an employee standpoint, they really wouldn't feel a whole lot of difference in that particular plan. And then there is an option to do a dual option with a high deductible health plan, which is that $6,100 plan, and there's ways to buy that down and use a health savings account deposit that might make that an option that's appealing to, to members as well. So I'll give you some more information on what that really looks like here in a minute. The other thing that the, the committee talked about, and Commissioner Hughley, to your point, there is a buydown to the $500 deductible level. We've seen several of the counties across the state increase that a little bit, just from a, if you kind of think about a COLA, you know, a cost of living adjustment, you know, you hate to think that that might apply to a deductible, but 500 deductible is really a richer benefit than it was when it was put in place several years ago. There is, we've got some information that shows if you did decide to do that, what, what really would that do to, you know, the, to the total cost of the plan if you moved that up to 1,000 instead of 500. And then the employee contribution, we looked at several different models on that, and one of the thoughts is right now, everybody on single coverage, regardless of whether you're in the law enforcement bargaining group or you're not, there's no contribution requirement for any, for anybody on single coverage, so it's kind of a, it's a free ride, you know, for being on the plan. Maybe, maybe one option would be to require some contribution from people on single coverage and then apply that savings to people who are on a coverage like employee spouse or employee children, employee family, and maybe reduce some of that cost burden for those folks by shifting that dynamic. So, and that's, that's just a high-level option that we considered. You know, we've got some, an exhibit that'll show you some details on how that might work. And then the cash-in-lieu option, right now, the county offers $400 for a cash-in-lieu option, so if somebody waives out a coverage, instead of paying the single, cost of single health insurance, there is a $400 stipend for those folks to, to choose to be on a different coverage. And that $400 back in, you know, when that was first established was kind of the magic number was what, what would it cost a person to get their, if they choose to go on Medicare, and they don't, you know, it could be, they're waving out to go on a spouse's plan, but if they chose to go to Medicare, that $400 would pretty much cover supplements and everything you might need to make that transition. Well, those costs have increased over the years, and we've seen a lot of the groups move, bump that up a little bit. So there's some discussion on whether, you know, the county would want to review that, and that can be done at any time. It doesn't have to be done at this renewal period, but it makes sense to do it then. And then we talked with the Benefits Committee about wellness options. There's a lot of different ways to make a wellness program, there's a lot of different ways that that could look, but Blue Cross and Blue Shield has a packaged plan already that includes a lot of the things that might make it difficult to manage one on your own as a kind of a base piece, and there's a $2.20, $2.50 per employee that's eligible for it per month is what the cost of that is, and then there's ways to enhance that. So if there's like a blood profile, health fairs of different sorts, maybe there's a gym membership or something like that that might be involved with it as well. So we talked about that as, kind of, that brings us back to this renewal, you know, if, in years past, there's been little incentive, financial incentive for counties to offer a wellness plan because it didn't change anything for your health insurance renewal rate, because you're, you got the same renewals everybody else did, so if you paid for a wellness plan, that return on investment was a little bit different, the way it was calculated. Well, now, if, if you're under the renewal strategy for the NACO pool, if, if there's a possibility of moving into a lower cost tier because your group is healthier, because of some of the things that the wellness plan can provide, and maybe there is a cost incentive for doing it now, where it's, that incentive's different than maybe what it used to be. So, so those are the high-level things, and I don't know, Tammy, did I miss anything? So with that, we'll, we'll jump into the next piece, and I don't know if you want to do the employer cost or the employee cost to begin with, if we, maybe we'll start with the employee cost and show what that might look like. we, maybe we'll start with the employee cost and show what that might look like. So, Tammy, I don't know if you sent out this exhibit. I, I put it all on one page, so it made it a little bit easier to follow.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah. I was trying to do that.
Yeah.
But I did send out all the documents to the board Friday.
So, was.
It's all on one page here.
This one might look a little bit different than the one that was sent out because it's on one page and there is one number that was changed on it, I think, from the version that was sent out, so. So, what this shows is if I'm an employee, this is how it's going to affect me. If, if I were to choose, if the, the county chooses to go with a dual option, the twenty-six hundred dollar plan and then the sixty-one hundred dollar, the high deductible health, health plan, this is one of the snapshots of the way it could work. So, in that, the box on the left-hand side that says NACO, Blue Cross, it says low deductible single plan. The, the things that are really important to employee are, you know, how's it going to affect me and deductible's pretty important. The other thing that this option offers is copays for doctor visits where your current plan does not. Everything applies to deductible and co-insurance. So, a lot of, a lot of people view that as a positive thing. Basically, what it means, if I go to the doctors, say I go twice a year, outside of my wellness exam, wellness is still covered at a hundred percent, but if I have a bronchitis or something, I go in and see my doctor, I pay a thirty-five dollar copay for that. So I'm not going to have to pay my deductible or co-insurance if those are the only services that I have. So, that's a little bit different than what's in place right now. But as you walk down through the bottom, that part highlighted in yellow, if I'm an employee, these are the things that are important to me. On that first column, it shows that I could still have that five hundred dollar deductible. And then the HRA, Commissioner Hughley, you're talking about how the county buys that down. So the, the county right now buys down from sixteen hundred down to five hundred. In this example, the county would buy down from twenty-six hundred to five hundred still, so the employee would still have that five hundred dollar deductible. So, the maximum amount on single coverage that the county would have, has an exposure there would be that twenty-one hundred dollars. So it'd be the difference between the five hundred and the twenty-six hundred. But as an employee, I'd have thirty-nine hundred as my out-of-pocket maximum. So if, if, if I'm on single coverage and something goes terribly wrong and I have all kinds of medical expenses, as long as I'm, they're covered services and I'm using in-network providers, that three thousand nine hundred is what I'm going to have for my out-of-pocket max for the year. So, that, that in itself is a rich benefit, in my opinion. Of course, I may be biased, I'm on a really high deductible health plan myself, so.
Well, I would second that. The fact that it's a very rich, thirty-nine hundred dollars per person per year, some companies, that's their deductible, let alone their out-of-pocket maximum, so yeah.
Mike, what's the out-of-pocket max right now for a single?
The out-of-pocket, it's, it's the same.
It's the same.
Yeah, on single. So whether you change from the sixteen hundred to the twenty-six hundred, you wind up with that same out-of-pocket maximum.
Same, okay, thank you.
Yep. So, so the next column over that center box, it's, it's a snapshot shot of the exact same plan, but it's showing if you did bump up that deductible to a thousand for the single person, then it, you know, it, they would have a thousand dollar deductible. The, the county's HRA exposure drops from twenty-one hundred to sixteen hundred because the employee's picking up another five hundred bucks if you choose to go that route. And then their out-of-pocket max is at four thousand four hundred dollars, so. And then the, the columns right beside that show if a person's on employee plus spouse plus child or employee plus family. So in that first box, you know, I would have a, if I'm on single, I'd have a five hundred deductible. If I'm on, my wife and I are on the plan, we have a thousand dollar deductible. And then, you know, the out-of-pocket max for two people would be that seven thousand eight hundred with the current five hundred deductible. And then if you chose to go with the thousand dollar deductible, it would jump up to that eight thousand eight hundred. So, so that's one of the, one of the options that the Benefit Committee considered and of course, from, from the NACO standpoint, it makes no difference to us. First Concord can administer the program any way that you choose to, to set that deductible level, so it all works the same there. The, the program that I want to spend a little bit of time talking about is on the far right-hand side. So we're seeing a lot of groups that are more interested in these high deductible health plans. And high deductible health plans, the, the whole premise is of that, those are, you can connect a health savings account with them and that health savings account works just like a savings account. It's an individual account for the employee that they can, the employer can put money in it, the employee can put money in it, and it's all tax-sheltered money and the employee takes that money with them if they don't spend it. So, the high deductible health plan, part of what makes that work is nothing is paid until you hit, you're deductible. So, wherever you set the deductible, it's got to be over, the federal, federal government sets guidelines on how low that deductible can go. But the sixty-one hundred is, definitely qualifies for the, to be eligible for a health savings account. And then the county, under this example, would buy down to a, from sixty-one hundred down to three thousand. So if I'm an employee, I've got a three thousand dollar deductible, but under this model, the county would contribute fifteen hundred dollars into a health savings account. So, at the end of the day, I really have a fifteen hundred dollar deductible because the county's buying down to three thousand, I'm getting a fifteen hundred into my contribution. But look what it does to the out-of-pocket maximum. So it drops the out-of-pocket maximum down to two thousand four hundred fifty bucks from thirty-nine hundred. So there's, there's really two.
Gets to that point, the two health profiles that this makes sense for.
Yeah, there's, in my opinion, probably makes sense for everybody, but there's two people that are really going to like it. One is those young employees, or doesn't even have to be a young employee, just an employee that really doesn't have hardly any health conditions. Wellness is still covered under here, so your preventative coverages are still covered at a hundred percent. And then if you go see the doctor, you pay that up until you hit your deductible, but if you're not going to use it much, you take that fifteen hundred bucks and you just roll it next year and the year after and the year after. It's, it's my money, I can do whatever I want with it and I could contribute some more into that if I would choose to. So that's one type of person that's going to love it. The other type of person is if you have a lot of health needs, you're going to go, you're going to hit your out-of-pocket max every year anyway. If, you, you get to it in a different way, but I'd rather pay twenty-four fifty out of my pocket than thirty-nine hundred if I'm on single coverage. So, people who are high utilizers should really like this. The thing that's hard for people to understand is it doesn't pay anything until you get to that deductible. So, there's, you, you, and if you choose to go this route, we really would like to have an opportunity to meet with employees and help them understand that. I think it's a fantastic option, but if, if I'm on a, if I'm a high utilizer and I'm on the plan and say I've got a eight hundred dollar prescription, that's a monthly prescription, I got to pay that eight hundred bucks when I go pick it up. And that's, that's, sometimes it's pretty hard for people to understand, hard for them to wrap their head around. And if they don't understand it well enough, they might feel like they were sold a bag of goods when they signed up for it. So we really want to help people, if you go this route, we really want to help people understand how that really works. The other piece that really would be a, something for the, the board to consider, that fifteen hundred dollar contribution can be made into the account from the employer's side in a number of ways. It could be put right in upfront so the employee has, they have money in the account all, you know, right from the get-go that they can spend. The fear with some groups is they say, well, if the person, you put it in July one and they quit July tenth, you can't get that money back. It's in their account, it's their money. So some groups will make that contribution monthly, some will make it quarterly, some will make it semi-annual. There's different ways to do that, so that's one thing you want to kind of think about if you go that route. And then from the employee's side, they, they can't spend any of that money until it's in the account. So, if they do have that eight hundred dollar prescription in July, that they may only have a hundred dollars worth of contribution or a smaller amount in the contribution. Of course, they can put their own money in there, so, so they would have a contribution that way. But that's the communication thing that we really want to make sure people understand before they sign up for it. The other thing I'd, I'd say about that, if you choose to go with the dual option, and you can do this even if you stay with the sixteen hundred plan or if you go to the twenty-six hundred dollar plan, the traditional PPO plans, you can add this July one, you know, if you do, we'd love to meet with employees and help them understand it. But we would recommend that you hold another open enrollment in, towards the end of the year for January one, because all these deductibles reset in January. And there might be some people that have moved up to where they, they're, they've already hit their out-of-pocket maximum or they're, they're at some point and they're deductible on the current plan where they, you know, they, it would, it would make a change for them that they may not be prepared for.
And the clerk's office was agreeable to, they recommended that as well.
I have a question, when we're talking about the sixty-one hundred high deductible, the employee's deductible would be three thousand, the county would kick in thirty-one hundred, okay? HSA, the health savings account, is fifteen hundred, but I thought you said that the county would contribute into that?
Yeah, so the, where it says an HSA deposit, that fifteen hundred, that, that would be the employer's contribution?
But, but how could the employer contribute into that if in fact, the employee can take that with them?
It's, that's just the, the way health savings accounts were set up by the federal government to allow that, so.
So we're, we're paying an additional fifteen hundred that goes to them.
Yeah.
If they want to take it with them at some later time.
Yep.
Which is why there's the discussion on, we can spread that out, that fifteen hundred contribution over a monthly basis.
But we're already putting in the thirty-one hundred up on top.
So the, the, yeah, and that thirty-one hundred, the way it's shown here would be a deductible buydown, it'd be the HRA buydown like you're doing right now.
Right.
So, so that wouldn't actually go to the employee.
No, but, but when it comes out of the county's pocket, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
So not only are we paying the thirty-one hundred, then we're paying, when I, I thought a health savings account was something that the employee put into, which they can, and then they could take that money. But I don't get them taking the money that the employer puts in. Usually it's, you take your own money out, get them.
Yeah, and, and you're right, there's different, employers do it different ways. I'm, I'm in a plan like this right now and through Lincoln Public Schools, this is where my wife works, they don't put any money in the health savings account.
There you go.
But we don't.
And some put, some put half and half or some put a percentage, some put none, so I'm just saying, this isn't the only opt, just the way you talked about.
Exactly, yeah, this, this was just one model.
Thank you, thank you.
There, there was, there was another county that implemented the same thing not long ago, actually two different counties. One was, I think overly generous probably, they put a ton of money into that health savings account where the other county that we put it into, their contributions weren't near as generous. So, there's a whole spectrum of the ways that this can, can be rolled out and this was just one example of, of what, you know, we had discussions with the Benefits Committee and it can look a lot different than this. It was just one, one way that we've put it on paper just as an exhibit for you.
Got you. The HSA does not have to be used in that year.
Right.
It can be carried over.
Right, yeah. So as, as an example, I've been in one for the last, gosh, probably twelve years, eleven years, something like that, and I've never filed a claim against it. We've just rolled it over year to year for the, in my mind, that's something that we'll use later on when we, I'm no longer receiving a paycheck.
So if the employee quits and/or retires, that health savings account goes with them.
Yep.
And so in, in your case, that's not so bad because that's your money you're taking. You know, you should be, you put that money in and so if you haven't used it as part of the insurance, you know, it's like a whole life or something. So that makes sense.
Yeah. The, the trade-off Lincoln Public Schools does is they offer two options like this. If, if we were on the, the traditional PPO plan, our premium would be a little over five hundred bucks a month. Since we're on the high deductible health plan, our premium's about eighty bucks a month. So, that's the way they make up that, that difference in the, it's just in the premium.
And that, that would be the same here because the premiums are significantly less to the county.
As they should be.
In some respects, you're paying a high premium and they leave anyway, so you already.
Like the next sheet that Mike had.
So, the money goes with them that way too, so.
So, yeah, that, that can be shaped a lot of different ways and, you know, it can, that dual option, there are some people that really, really like that and they want that dual option. Some people, they're happy right where they're at and they wouldn't want to make any change. What we usually see when we roll out a dual option like this, that first year, there's, you know, there's some, some people take it and they understand it and it's the right fit for them, but usually the second year, we see enrollment increase in it because people are a little more comfortable with the whole concept. So, this next sheet is kind of where the rubber hits the road. And the way this is broken out, on that first column where it says current contribution, so if you stay with the sixteen hundred dollar plan and you don't make any changes, as we walk all the way down through these costs, I want to kind of show you where you're at now and where you might be if you make some of these other choices. So, these are the rates that'll be effective July one, two thousand twenty-four. And right now, just to kind of walk through this, that first column where it says current sixteen hundred dollar plan, right below that, it says employee only and it shows seventy-four. So right now, you've got seventy-four people who are not in the law enforcement bargaining group that are on single coverage. And the amount the employer is paying towards their coverage is twelve hundred forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Right now, the employee's not paying any of that. As you walk all the way down through there, next is employee spouse, there's ten people, the employer's paying sixteen hundred and seventy-nine, the employee's paying eight hundred and thirteen. And then on family coverage, the employer's paying eighteen, eighteen oh five and the employee's paying ten forty-six. And this is where it was, you know, the, kind of the first thing, conversation began is that, that thousand forty-six dollars was really difficult to recruit and retain employees that needed family coverage. That's, that's kind of what started a lot of this conversation. So, as you roll that down, for the non-law enforcement bargaining group, the county, without making any changes, would pay that one, one million five hundred fifty-nine thousand and the employees would be picking up two hundred thirty-nine thousand of that cost. The same mathematics works for the law enforcement bargaining group, but through collective bargaining, they've negotiated a lower contribution from the employee's side for those other coverages. So, as an example, if I'm on family coverage and I'm on the law enforcement bargaining group, I pay four hundred, five hundred forty-one dollars, where if I'm not in the law enforcement bargaining group, I'm paying a thousand forty-six dollars. So, those are the ones, it seems like from the conversation, those are the, you know, the, the non-law enforcement family groups is where we really had a hard time. So, following that on down, we've got, the costs are divided between employer and employee. So that cash-in-lieu, right now, the, the county's contributing four hundred dollars per month for the people who waive out a coverage. So, from up above, instead of paying twelve hundred and forty-one dollars for single coverage, the county's paying four hundred dollars. So that does create a savings for the county, that cash-in-lieu. But that total cost of that program, you got fifty-one people that are utilizing it, is about, is two hundred forty-four thousand dollars, so it's about a quarter of a million for that cash-in-lieu program. Of course, the savings comes, you're not paying for single insurance form.
Exactly, you're spending that much.
So, we talked about the HRA. Then when we study the HRA, we look at it in two different ways. One is if every person who is eligible for that buydown were to hit their, their maximum amount that would be contributed by the county, even on family coverage. So if everybody hit it, which we've never had a group do that, but if everyone did, that total would be two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred dollars. In reality, and we looked at this from your last claims experience, the, the county's hitting fifty-seven percent of that expected HRA maximum, so the county over the, the average over the last two plan periods has been a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that's been paid out through those HRAs. So, you know, it's well below that maximum amount, but it's still something that needs to be budgeted for because it's a real cost to the county. So, right below there, we looked, we plugged it in just as expected cost, there isn't a fee to pay for that claims administration, that's thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty bucks. So, really the number that, from a budgeting standpoint, that annual expected cost, that two million nine hundred four thousand, that's, if, if the county doesn't make any changes in deductibles or contribution scheme, that's what we would expect the cost to be on the employer's side. And then the cost on the employee's side would be that three hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. So as a percentage, right now, the employer's paying about eighty-five point four percent of the total cost of the health plan, the employee's paying fourteen point nine percent. health plan, the employee's paying 14.9%. And that, that's, from all of the groups that we work with, we see it, it's usually around 89.11, 89% employer paid, 11% employee paid. The state of Nebraska, for example, for their employees, it's, they require 21% paid for the premium on the employee's side, and 79% is paid by the employer, so that kind of gives you a sketch of, you know, some of the other public employers out there. So, this is the other important number, I think, from this exhibit, is if you look all the way down at the bottom left there, that $3,280,000, that's what we would expect without you making any plan changes or any contribution changes. That's the total cost of the plan after all of your, all-in expenses, regardless of who's paying for it. That's, that's the number that I think is kind of important from a budget standpoint. So, the next column next to it, this is where, in this exhibit, and of course, this is just a snapshot exhibit, and there's a lot of things that could change on here, and the thing that would change is, on that $2,600 plan, it's showing the employee contributing 5% of the premium on single coverage. So, on that single coverage, the employer now would be paying $1,122, the employee would be paying $59. So, that would be, that would be a change, you know, as far as I know, Lincoln County employees have never paid anything for single coverage, so this would be having them contribute something towards the cause. The other thing that it changed, the way that the, the way that the contributions have been set up right now, it gets a little bit complicated, but the math in it says, if you take family coverage, for example, the employer's going to contribute the single coverage amount. So, over on the right-hand side, just to follow on the $2,600 premiums, the way coverage works, if you're not on single coverage, the contribution, it would be that $2,713, and then you subtract out $1,181, and then, right now, the employer kicks in another 35% of that difference. The option shown here would be in the employer bumping that up to 70% of that difference. So, there'd be, kind of be, it wouldn't be necessarily doubling the contribution on the employer's side, but it would be increasing that percentage that's, of the balance remaining. And that was done in an effort to try to make the coverage more affordable for people who need employee plus, and employee fam, employee plus something else, you know, spouse or child or family coverage. So, that, that, I don't know how that mathematic equation came up, you know, Becky had some memory of it, and Terry, I don't know if you've remembered how that got to be the way it was, but...
No.
So, somewhere along the lines, that formula was implemented. So, following that all the way down, and what this exhibit shows is if the employee still stays at the $500 deductible, so it's not increasing the deductible for the employee on the $2,600 plan. And if you follow that all the way down, it does increase the expected funding on the HRA for the employer. So, it increases, you know, the employer cost, where, towards the bottom, where it says actual expected, if you do, if you don't make any changes, it'd be that $2.9 million, $2.94,000, it would increase it to $2,941, so it's about a, what, $37,000 increase by doing that. But down at the very bottom, that total cost, that $3,233, is lower than if you don't make any change at all. So, that does create some savings, and there's different ways that you can divide that up, you know, maybe you don't want to require a contribution for single coverage for some, maybe you don't want to contribute 70%, you know, of that balance, maybe 75 or 65, maybe there's another number that makes sense in there. But what we're really, what we're really trying to do is make the most out of the dollars that are available for employee benefits. So, on the last column that's not highlighted in blue, that would be if everybody moved to that high deductible health plan, which I don't, I don't know that you'd want to even recommend that, or I wouldn't want to recommend it, but if they did, it just shows that total cost down at the bottom again, that $3,055,000. So, that would create some savings, and it would create some savings to the employer's side and the employee's side. So, if you implemented this, this strategy, what I would expect is, you'd probably have, probably still 75 or 80% of people would stay on the traditional $2,600 plan. You would have some people that would move over. Either option are going to create the savings for the, for the county and for the employer.
You mean, some would stay on the 16, some would move to the 26?
Well, you'd maybe replace that $1,600 with the 2600.
You're making the assumption that we're replacing it.
The recommending, and we haven't gotten to the recommendations.
Okay, but that was my point, because when you said, when you were talking about our current 26, we don't have a current 26.
Yeah, there needs to be some criteria.
You've got to remember, I'm not on this committee, so I'm just going to keep public.
Yep. So, and that is an option also, just to keep the $1,600 plan and put the $6,100 plan in place. So, really, everything would, if you did that, everything would stay the same from the employee's side on that $1,600 plan, and then the 26, the $6,100 would be an option. So, you can put that option in with any, any combination that you wanted. So, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
It's a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Your wellness program would hit, well, talking historic numbers, so probably not, but if we had engaged in a wellness program through Blue Cross last year or the year before, would be, would be, would we be looking at the same 8.75% increase anyway?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say.
Hard to say that.
Yeah.
We had some pretty significant claim size, claims.
Anomalies.
Yeah, they were anecdotal.
Yeah.
But when it comes to the claim frequency, we probably would have seen a reduction there. I know that the city put in a few years ago, a wellness plan, and they've seen some savings in what they pay for benefits, and...
I just wondered if there was a proactive impact to our premium requirement or our increase if we would engage a wellness program in conjunction with Blue Cross?
Sometimes those wellness programs, now, this is the underwriters and actuaries, you know, if we go to those, those folks and say, hey, we're putting in this wellness plan, you know, we want our claims projection reduced, they're going to say, eh, we've got to see proof in the pudding before we do that. But with that said, there's a lot of things that you might catch. I think somebody mentioned that there were, like, a couple cancers, and then there's some high blood pressure things, and...
That's typically what happens in wellness programs that I've been involved with.
Yeah. The, the other thing is, within the NACO pool, we see a high percentage of people that are either diabetic or pre-diabetic, and some people, either they don't know they are, or they don't manage it very well. These wellness programs, I think, are, they do a pretty good job of highlighting all the things that people should be doing, so if you can have somebody just take a little bit better care of themselves, they might not turn into one of those big claims later on. So, there's...
I was, I was pleased to see, kind of surprised, actually, that the survey that Tammy put out, this 75, 80% of our employees said they would participate. That's a pretty high number.
Really high number.
That's a very high number.
Yeah.
That we voluntarily participate, and there's where your savings come quite years from now, is I'm not a diabetic because I changed my diet, lost 20 pounds and all that.
Over the last decades, we've had several different kind of wellness plans that we've looked at. They've not worked well for us. This last one that we had, I think, probably, although there wasn't a direct monetary benefit, was good, and we did have some participation, but I'm surprised that number two, because that's, that's a high number of people.
We had a very good response to the survey.
Yeah, we did.
Employees were strongly encouraged, you know, to complete the survey, and they did, they did a good job. The wellness that we had in the past, the program, you know, we did a health fair for a few years with another company who cannot participate anymore, and they won't file the wellness claim any longer with Blue Cross. So, since that, I've reached out to a couple people, and it's just kind of ended with no assistance. But the employees that I talked to, this is the only time they come in and get their blood and their blood pressure, once a year, is coming in to, when they're here at the building. So, that early detection was key for several people in the past when we did those, and again, the follow-up, you know, once you can get the initial, first one, then you can compare it year to year and notice issues.
Right.
And then they can follow up with their doctors and follow up with that wellness. So, yeah, I would like to see the county participate in the Blue Cross wellness program as a start, and then there is a small fee for each employee that the county, but I think in the long run, that would help.
And did I hear you say that, right now, it's two and a half a month with the Blues Wellness Program for managing it and stuff?
Yeah, and that gets you the framework that really helps kick everything off, and then if there's, you know, some groups will say, we'll give a gift card if you do so many steps, or it's a gym membership, or...
The incentives are important.
I think that the key for success is, it's the incentivization. You know, how are you getting your employees to have a healthier lifestyle, getting them active, getting them exercising, and that carrot has to be appropriate for participation, but can't be so exorbitant that it's an undue cost for the county. We've got to have that right, that right mix where we get the return on investment when it comes to our costs and our health benefits. And so, I think that there's still work that needs to be done in that, as far as researching some different options.
Yeah, I, there's a couple of options. I did talk with West Central Health Department, you know, they did work with the city, and when I talked to Trudy, it did save them significantly on their health premiums, because they did get people to work, but they had great incentives as well, and so they had the majority of the employees participate. And so, there's, but they'll create a program for us, they would be excited to do that. It would be a little bit more cost than what the Blue Cross is, but they would, their program would consist of more, it would be more, that's the base than, yeah, with Blue Cross. West Central would be a bigger program, and they would help manage that program as well.
You know, we had one time looked at subsidizing or almost paying all of the membership to a gym or something, remember?
Yeah, we did that, and I think when we did that, it was the enrollment fee that we paid. And we had a few, but then it wasn't paid monthly, and I think then they just kind of would drop off, but, yeah.
So, when it comes to the wellness plan, I think that the, we're still doing some research on different options.
Yes, yes.
We'll have recommendations as a committee come forward at a later date. We just really wanted to focus, because time is getting close to renewal.
Yes.
That we got information about the plans before the board, as well as the recommendations that the committee has come up with, and I think that that's probably a great segue into that, that point of discussion at this point, so... And I would like...
I think it's worth mentioning, too, that the two, the two different plan options here that we're looking at aren't just something that's just been presented to us.
Right.
These are after multiple iterations from recommendations from the safety committee, requesting them to change and tweak.
Benefits committee, yes.
Benefit.
Sorry. So, it's not just, this isn't just a couple plans that are off the shelf and...
There's been a lot of discussion and a lot of information.
...to...
Yep, so, that's, you're literally making the case for me there, Jason. The committee's reviewed a lot of information, and they've realized the importance based on what the county employees are asking as far as options when it comes to their health insurance coverage. There was a lot of feedback on, when it comes to the recruiting and retention of candidates, particularly in a few of our departments, and Jason, you may be able to speak to this, but with the roads department, when it comes to employee-plus plans, the cost associated with those premiums is pretty high when you take a look at elsewhere in our market with other labor organizations. Another thing that we identify particularly with the renewal is how do we transition people that may be eligible to find other coverage, whether it be Medicare or whatnot, so maybe an increase in the cash-in lieu, and I think that the, raising that from 400 to 500, it's a tremendous saving still to the county, despite paying the premiums, but we see that as an incentive for maybe those employees that have higher claims and whatnot, that being less of an impact on us moving forward when it comes to renewal as a county subgroup. So, as Jason was saying, the information that you have before us, I think the benefits committee, and I don't want to speak for the committee, because we have a lot of the representatives in here, but they did kind of, I think there was some coalescence on maybe moving from the 1,600 plan to the 2,600 plan and still buying it down to where the deductible was 500. There was a lot of discussion on, the county in the past has paid 100% of those individual, the employee-only premiums, is at time, because of just the rapid change in the health insurance industry, that maybe we asked for a little bit of skin in the game, an investment on the employee's part, and raising that to 5%. I know we even talked upwards of 10, and it's kind of been backed down, because we didn't want the undue cost to the employee. A few years ago, we made strides where the county did not pay any of the employee-plus plans, those options, additional coverage for, you know, employee plus spouse, or employee plus children, or just the family coverage. That additional coverage, county now pays 35% of the premiums on those additional plans, and I know that at that time, we saw maybe benching that up to where, over time, the county was taking on a larger proportion of that to help offset those costs, and so the committee talked about that, and I think that they arrived on that 70%. There was some coalescence on that number, so, Brian, you got, raise your hand.
With that, Ian said, with the recent 8% increase to the payment plan via $1,046, we're almost back to where we started.
Right.
Yep.
It used to be $11,000, Steve, being what dangerously close to being right back to where we started.
Yep. So, I don't want to keep on talking for the entire committee, so I really think that it's important for us to hear about the perspective of the different departments.
Well, I think, first off, you pointed to recruitment. I know that there was at least one, I believe, and two, very highly qualified people that actually turned down our offer for appointment and sold it based on health insurance costs for their family.
What departments?
Huh?
What jobs?
That was for roads.
I know, but I'm talking about maintenance work for mechanic, what?
Maintenance worker, maintenance workers.
Okay.
And we do have a lot of single parents here that wouldn't have access for their children for others. They would still probably qualify for the Medicaid, because I don't know that really, even at the 70%, that's still affordable for some, but in a dual-income family, it could be. It's tough, it's tough, it's tough.
Yeah, so I think, I guess in my mind, it's, we looked at three basic things, right? One, to give people a couple options, because everybody's situation's different, right? And if you have a couple of options, depending on what suits you best, right?
Yep.
So, a couple of options there. Number two, try to reduce the cost for the employees, because that has been an issue and is a pretty significant cost for people with family or children, things like that. And number three, ultimately, is to watch out for the county's cost in the whole plan as well, so, I think...
Well said.
I think what we have before us is all of those things.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, likely, we're not going to, we're not going to have 100% participation if we went, if we may, if this board went with the $2,600 plan and the high deductible plan, we're not going to see 100% participation in either or. It's going to be, the cost of the county's going to be somewhere in the middle, and if you do the calculations, I think it's going to be right about where we are if we stayed and didn't make any changes. stayed and didn't make any changes. And then just retain the $1,600 plan, I think the cost to the county is going to be roughly about the exact same.
And with the renewal period, what is the deadline?
Well, that, Blue Cross wants stuff on May, towards the end of May.
Okay.
I thought it was June.
No, open enrollment is June and.
There is.
Open enrollment is.
Open enrollment is in June and the Benefits Committee, when we talked.
We weren't going to get these.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
If we offer the dual option, education is just really important for employees and they've offered to be here for the month of May to help with that education piece. Even the one-on-ones, you know, with some employees that might have those questions. What's that?
This month, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This month.
Really, the, if people are making changes, we want to have that all done by June 13th at the latest. And I know there's a payroll component to it too, so the deductions would need to be implemented prior to that, I think.
And then we would offer hopefully that open enrollment again in January and offer some more education hopefully December, employees.
Changing the cash and lieu to 500 from 400, what do you anticipate the number of increased participants increasingly?
Yeah, that's a good question because there's two things at work there. If you do require a contribution on single coverage, that's like a, if there's a carrot and stick, this would be more, that'd be more of a stick.
That was part of.
The 500 would be more of a carrot to get some people off there. But you've done a great job over the last couple of years. Gyms come out and done several meetings with people who are Medicare eligible.
Yeah.
You've got 51 people already using the cash and lieu, which is a pretty high percentage. So I think you'd pick up a few, but I don't know if you're going to pick up enough. If you think about it, it's 51 times 100 bucks if you increase it 100 bucks. So that's, you know, times 12.
When you started the cash and lieu in 2018, it was $400. So there hasn't been a change since 2018. So it's really kind of.
It's about time.
It is, right, yeah.
So I think so. I'm not sure you would catch that many more new people, but it's still going, it's going to create the same incentive that they had before. Because that money's taxable, so when a person, if it's 400 bucks, they don't take home 400. It's something lower than that because they're paying taxes on it. And that money that they're using, if they're using it for a Medicare supplement, it's probably not covering those supplements anymore.
If you have employees that are taking their children to another plan, you're kind of penalizing them to charge the single payer a percentage back. And they're already off, they're already there because they had to go somewhere else to afford it.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, you talk about fairness, I don't know, are you really gaining anything for the employee?
Yeah.
For cost.
There are.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's.
Because I know, I've had people tell me that, well, I've got my insurance, but my, my wife has insurance and our kids are on this one.
Yeah.
So it's not necessarily just a single employee that's going to be expected to bring out of pocket.
Right.
There might be a family, nuclear family there that's already fragmented on coverage because of the cost.
Like in our family situation, we have the same thing through NACO, the cash and lieu, and it's the contribution set at the right point where it's, it works for me to be on my wife's plan.
Right.
So it saves NACO some money. But if NACO were going to charge, you know, 80 bucks or something for me to be on single coverage, that would be a disincentive for me to be on that coverage.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that would be enough to make me leave.
I'd rather, I'd rather see the in lieu go up and see if that, we could leave that singular where it is because it's not just necessarily a single employee.
Right, right.
And maybe their stats prove me wrong. I didn't look into all the numbers here that.
There's two things that would be hard to message to employees going on here. One of them is, you know, if you increase the deductible from 500 to 1,000, that's, that's not, that's hard. But those 74 people who are not paying anything for coverage now, and now all of a sudden there's a contribution required, that, that's going to create some disruption probably in your workforce. So to your point.
Yes.
Like John Cannon always says, is the, is the juice worth the squeeze?
Yeah, I've heard him say that.
Yeah.
So back to our committee, is you've got a hard and fast two recommendations or do you want us to try to digest some of these numbers and come back next Monday with number, your number one recommendation, your number two, or are we already there with these charts?
I mean, again, I don't want to speak for the entire committee. I think that we had a lot of conversation on it and we were really comfortable with what's been presented, but ultimately it's this board that gets to decide and there's options.
Say that, say what?
So these two plans, we were, our recommendation was to offer the two plans.
On the blue sheet.
These two plans to employees and increase the cash.
Tammy had sent out an email to everybody with the recommendations.
Yep.
So the middle one and the right one?
Yeah.
The highlighted blue center one and the one on the right, that's your recommendations.
And the highlighted blue keeps your deductible at 500.
Yeah, we felt that keeping the deductible at 500 was important instead of bumping it up to 1,000.
And that is, and that's reflected in that middle column, correct?
Yes.
Right, correct. Okay, so that gives that individual that doesn't want to increase the deductible, that gives them a carrot.
Yep, to stay where they're at and have that $500 deductible.
The only stick is the single employee contributes some amount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if we stay with the current, the far right column, it's still the $500 deductible.
On the, in the blue there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so the 2,600 would still be the $500 deductible.
500, yeah, without a contribution from the single.
Be the center column.
This one.
Or it's the left.
Yeah, the far left is all things.
Oh, sorry, far left.
The far left is no changes being made.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's your current one.
So on this recommendation that I should have looked at, I guess, but what is, what is the cost? There's not, what is the overall cost to go with what we're talking about right there? Just first column?
It'll be somewhere in between these two numbers.
3.2 and 3.0.
Okay.
To the county, it'll be.
That's, that's right.
To the county, it'll be somewhere in between.
Oh.
We needed to have, what was the timeline again?
The subgroup app needs to be submitted by, I think it's May 24th, was it? Towards the end of May, so.
So this board needed to digest these numbers a little bit and come back next week. We'd still have time. It just would shrink the amount of education piece before open enrollment.
We worked on the assumption that everybody's kind of on board with the center column and the right column as options. Can we come back and clean it up a little bit with, just drop this column off and hit it with some bullet points Monday and recap the program?
Yeah, so that, from the subgroup app, there is some information on contribution, but really just picking the options is the key piece of it.
Okay.
So that would be easy.
Maybe I'm overcomplicating it.
Yeah.
I'm all right. You obviously put a lot of work into committee has and they're directly impacted by it, so I have a lot of faith in what they've done.
Yeah.
My, my only question is about the health savings account. What percentage that is and can you have a little bit of conversation about that? I know we haven't had to. I think, Ken, I like your idea. I know it makes a little bit less time on the other end, but I think it's good that we talk about this a little bit. You know, that's a, it's a big thing, it's a lot to digest, so appreciate it. And I would like to carry this over myself till next week and see if we can get it finished up. I think we're close, really close, I think anyway. But that even leaves us a little time after the meeting. We need to, to, while this is fresh on our mind. Is that's okay with everybody?
It's fine. We're still well within the deadline and.
Yeah, that, we just double check that deadline is the 21st is what, so you'd have two meetings between now and then.
We'll work off the terms.
I'm sure it won't take more than one meeting next week because that's.
Right.
So if that's okay with everybody, let's carry this action over, tie them over until next week. And we've got a lot of information to go over. Appreciate it, guys, for coming out and sharing that with us.
Yeah, glad to be here for it.
And having said that, I wouldn't mind unless somebody else has to get out of here and continue this dialogue as a dialogue, not as an action item, so that, you know, right now, it's fresh on everybody's mind because it's, we're going to get lost.
We're still trying to discuss, so.
Yeah, and that's not even.
We're just carrying over the.
Consider.
Would you like us to stick around in case you have any questions or?
That's, that's fine, that's fine. So we're going to carry this over next week, but as far as discussion, we're still on the discussion part. For what it's worth, I, I, this is just me, I'm a little uncomfortable with maybe the county putting in as much into the health savings account as we are, simply in that, you know, it's like a, you know, I don't care if we're looking at an IRA or whatever we are, certain funds that go in right away become the employees' funds. If he puts them in, puts in 1,000 bucks, you have to be able to take that 1,000 bucks with him if he doesn't use it. But for us necessarily to put in those funds and say, okay, well, instantly you can take those with you, I mean, we might have a, that's, that's just my point. I would like, you know, I know a lot of the, I shouldn't say that, I don't know a lot of the schools. I know several schools that have this and they are, they encourage the employees to utilize their health savings account the maximum they can, I'll put it that way. And because it's there for a reason.
That's why we made the recommendation, because that was a concern that I had as well, is we're just, if we front load that at the beginning of the plan period, what happens if the employee leaves two weeks into it?
That's my point.
And so to mitigate that risk to the county, we made the recommendation of that being divided on a quarterly basis so not to overwhelm county clerk's office with payroll. You could do it monthly, but again.
Where did we come up with the 1,500 dollars?
I think that was a combination of the premiums are considerably lower with this plan and so trying to be cognizant of the, what the county is providing to employees that are on the other plan, the benefit is roughly the same from the county. But I'll let Mike speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, so that 1,500 was kind of, we've worked with several groups that have looked at this and what it's doing right now, if you're an employee, you get a $500 deductible, their deductible would really be at 3,000. So the county's buying down, you know, to the 3,000 amount, but then they get another 1,500 bucks. So if you count all that together, I'm now going from a 500 deductible to a 1,500 deductible, so that's kind of a change for the employee. So that's kind of how we got to where it is. There's some groups that would say, hey, we're going to put 2,000 in and we're going to make the deductible 5,000 for the employee. So there's, those are all variables that you can decide where you, where you place those amounts. And that, where it is right now is similar to what we've seen some other groups use and their, their reasoning can be completely different on why they.
And you came up with 1,500 based on what the deductible was raised to?
Yeah, yep.
Especially at the first year, if they take it the first year with prescriptions.
So wouldn't the deductible, I'm really confused now because if we're looking at the 2,600 line, okay, I thought that we, maybe, maybe I got in the wrong area how we front loaded. I thought that we were buying that down still to a 500, so rather than paying 11 now, we're paying 21.
That's, that's correct.
Isn't that correct? That is correct.
Yeah, that's on the 2,600 dollar.
26, we're talking about the high deductible.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, now let me, let me re, rethinking and I apologize.
All right.
Had somebody, she's, let me look at yours. All right. And were we not also looking at going from a percent we pick up on multifamily from, or I mean, family from 35 to 70? Correct. I mean, that's doubling it, so that's a big shot right there, guys. It's huge.
It was, but.
It is a big shot.
I think that was the ultimate goal a couple of years ago, was to get to that number as far as the Benefits Committee. And there was some discussion when we made that change to 35%. We couldn't go to 70 all at one time.
To a rest of dollars, we have to consider our budget.
And where the budget, we're basically going to stay in line, we felt that it was an appropriate time to be able to do that.
So let me make sure I understand this now. So it's a health savings account. Let me look at this, I think I understand this a bit better, maybe I don't.
Have you had other counties participate at the, at the high level, high deductible level?
Have done that for.
We've got three recently, Burke County, Boone County, Dundee County put it in as an option like this.
And what kind of participation do you have history yet as to what kind of participation was had in that?
So Burke and Boone put it in as the only option, that's the only plan. Dundee put it in as a dual option like this and they.
Okay, so that's why they.
The only people who participated are the ones in the clerk's office and the treasurer that understand it. The rest of them are afraid of it. So they have five out of 29, I think, that.
Pretty good size presented.
Yeah, really, yeah, for the first year especially.
26.
Yeah, this was, this was.
Have you had other counties transition from the single employee zero?
We would, yeah.
Contribution of two, like a 50 or 60 dollar contribution?
No, I haven't seen that yet.
So we would be the first county making that transition?
Yeah.
I was curious to see how many people would leave the program because of that at the single contribution.
One of the things that I really like about the way this sets up, if you think about somebody, right now there's nine people on family coverage.
Right.
They're paying 1,046 dollars or they will be in July.
Okay.
If they had an option to pay 382 dollars, they could take that extra 700 bucks and stick it in the health savings account and then keep all that money, you know, so.
Okay.
At the end of the, at the end of the day, that, that's a fantastic option for people.
That really is.
Yeah.
Hate to use the old phrase, but that's a no-brainer.
Sure.
But you also have those that are participating in single insurance and either go with cover on their spouses also, yes.
It's really not because we're only taking the HRA, the relish. So the 16 does go down to 1,000.
The information you presented.
Oh, I see. Can these, gotcha.
Okay.
We discussed going to 1,000.
Okay, okay.
But I'm.
Okay, so that's okay, so.
It would be curious to know of those 74, how many of them truly are singles and how many of them are doing just what you said.
What happens over here, does this stay the same on this column for?
Many, many years ago, I was just a cover because why would we, and we didn't.
See, we're looking at family on the 26.
Jason, have you taken any of this back to your work group? What is there?
21 and 5.
Wanted to see where we were at.
Julie, how about, how about you? You're just learning, like me?
just learning, like me?
We're not going to pick up the additional buy-down on the family.
Thank you, guys, for all your hours. I can tell you've put a lot in this, so...
That's, that's, that's what we do. We're...
Lot of information.
We work for you guys.
On the blue sheet, it doesn't say that either. I can do it.
And Tammy, the explanation that you gave...
No, not 30, oh, yeah, we're buying down 37.
Really put it in understandable terms, so I appreciate that greatly.
And the 5%, we really hashed it out. I mean, we really, it's tough.
It is tough.
It is. You know, and I personally, I mean, I've spent many hours thinking about it, and I'd be upping the deductible to 1,000 and still have zero instead of 5%. That's an option, so...
You know, why couldn't we do this? Why could we not set up our own pool as far as the, no, 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 not, no, not big pool, little pool. Little pool, not talking, I don't even want to go there. No. How about, why can't we consider setting up a little line item over here, rather than HSA county contribution into that we're going to lose? We only, if the employee takes off, you know, our contribution's in there. I know you said break it quarterly, make it less. Why can't we have our own pot out here? You'd mentioned the rules on how HSAs work, okay?
I think it's federally...
Pardon me?
Federally regulated.
Well, there is another option.
That's my, yeah.
There, there's a program called a funded HRA and National Insurance, you know, the vendor that you've worked with already. They have that as an option, and there is a vesting schedule that you can apply to it.
Okay.
We've had it. The, the beauty of the HRA, the funded HRA, is you can put it on any health plan. You don't have to have a high deductible health plan. And I had mentioned Boone County put in the high deductible health plan. They put in the 6,100 dollar plan, but it has copays on it. So, that is, that doesn't qualify for a health savings account, so they use this funded HRA, a funded...
Similar to this.
The, the thing that you kind of lose with that is employees can't put money in there, and...
But they could still put it into theirs.
They could put it in the flexible spending account.
Well, wait a minute, why couldn't they put it in a, in a health savings account?
Well, and if, if you use this plan, you can, because it's still eligible for health savings accounts.
That's my point. They could still contribute to the HSA.
Yeah.
Right?
And then the employer could put the money.
If we, if we wanted to supplement that at some time, we could out of this money that's not an HSA. And that way, if they do take off, or every year down the road, we don't use it, that, that stays the county's funds, not their funds. But we still have a pot that we could go into.
That's an HRA.
Yeah, so, if, probably the easiest way, if you wanted to do that, would be take the deductible and lower it down to 15, you know, you'd be adding it on there. So, instead of the employee having a $3,000 deductible, they would have 3,000 minus 1,500. They'd have a $1,500 deductible if they wanted to be in that plan.
Buying it down on that end.
And that, that would still use your same HRA funding through First Concord like you're doing right now. You'd just be buying down further. So, be, be using kind of the same money. When, if you put that 1,500 into an employee's account, that's a fixed dollar amount. You know exactly how much you got based on your number of people that are in that plan. When you put it in the HRA, you don't spend it until it's, until there's a claim filed against it. So, you really don't, usually don't, you wouldn't spend that whole 1,500 usually. So, from a budget standpoint, it's probably going to save the employer some money. From an employee's standpoint, it, it probably reduces the incentive for them to go under that plan. So, the ones that you might see go in there are the ones that right now, if they're under the, you know, if they're looking at these two plans, if they're on family coverage, that, they'd have to pay 477 dollars for their family premium. They'd pay 382 if they went to the higher deductible plan, but they'd take on another 1,000 dollars in deductible. And that, you know, you think about the math on that, they're saving 90-some bucks a month times 12, so it would...
Same amount, worse as hell.
Yeah, so it would cover it. But they would be getting their savings from reduction in what they're paying for their health insurance premium. So, you kind of get to the same, same place. A lot of people really like the idea, and I don't know if you've had any feedback on that, about the... HSA is having, having that money stays with them if they don't utilize it. So, sometimes it reduces your utilization if a person says that. Maybe I can...
That, that works well for them, because they do get their money, but they haven't used it. Now, they're getting my constituents' money. That's, that's my only thing. And it's complicated, but...
Yeah. There is the philosophy that these, the high deductible health plans, when they first were introduced, and there's probably still, I haven't heard the argument as strong as it used to be, but it's consumerism. It changes, if it's my money I'm spending, I'm going to be more careful about it.
Refrugal, of course.
So, instead of, like a prescription, somebody might go in and doctor says, get this prescription. Well, if it's 120 bucks, but there's a generic available that's eight, if it's my money, I'm going to take that $8 one. If the pharmacist or my doctor's okay with it, if it's the employer's money, I'll take that 121, you know, so...
No question about it.
That, and that, that kind of goes back to that deposit into the health savings account, that kind of, the whole philosophy of those health savings accounts is there's consumerism involved, and people will make better decisions if it's their money. So, you know, it's, it's the genesis of those high deductible health plans.
Ken, any other thoughts for at least this time right now?
I'm ready to digest it all and come back Monday.
I agree. So, any reason for a closed session?
I can just follow, no.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? Anything else for the good of the county? We're adjourned at 11:00.